All right. Apologies, my first act as Chair was to extend our break for 15 minutes because we were just needing a little bit more time. So, thank you for indulging us. And we're going to go ahead and start with, let me get my board book info up here. Great, so we've got Julie and Philip to do item 10 for us, Enterprise Risk Management.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yes, absolutely.
Members of the Board. Julie Underwood, Chief Financial Officer, and I'm here with Phil Burkholder. He's our Enterprise Risk Manager. And semi-annually, we provide a report to the Board that provides you with oversight on CalSTRS enterprise-wide risks. And so Phil is going to present to you our latest report as of March 31st.
Thank you, Julie. Let me get this close enough so everyone can hear me. What I'd like to do is kind of walk you through the documents really quick because I know some of you are new to the Board, and so just kind of walk you through the report. What you have here in front of you, beginning on TRB 305, is a report that's in three pieces. We have a heat map, we have a risk score report, and we have a summary of all the work we've been doing since the last time we reported to you in November. So, every quarter, our executive team gets together and they talk about risks for the organization. They receive input from our risk champions, and the risk champions receive information from their line managers to make sure that they understand what's going on, and they share all that information through, with my team, and we facilitate discussion with the executive team. So, the report you have here is the result of that work. Beginning on TRB 309 is the risk score report, which shows all of our sub-risks, all the detail for our sub-risks, of the 10 major risk categories that we normally show you on the heat map. On TRB 307, we have summarized the changes to the documents that support these reports. So, through the discussions with ERC, we talk about what should change. Sometimes we add sub-risks, sometimes we remove sub-risks, and in this particular case, for this period, that is what has occurred and is what's summarized on TRB 307. Now, those changes that are there were significant enough for us to document and make sure that we've recognized them in our documentation, but they weren't enough to change the movement of the risk categories on the heat map. But I want to quickly kind of cover the heat map for you. So, the heat map is two different maps. The top map shows inherent risk for each of our 10 risk categories. So, inherent risk in this case is risk that something's going to occur without the benefit of all the risk mitigation measures that we put into place, all the internal controls. So, if you strip all of that away, that is what this heat map is supposed to show for these 10 risk categories. The lower half, the bottom heat map, shows the effect of all of our risk mitigation activities, all the internal controls and all the efforts we put to kind of reduce risks. That is what the residual risk map down below is meant to show. In this case, this is exactly the same map as we had shown you in November. It did not make any changes to the major risk categories there. But the summary is on 307, and the risk score report is in the back as an attachment. I will note that we did make a change from the original document that was put on the website. On TRB 312, we had to make a change to the graphical representation for 7A and 7C. The numbers there that are shown were correct, but the barks were a little off, and so we had to make an adjustment. So, if you've printed this or looked at this since Monday, you've got the right copy. If you printed it initially when it first became public, you may have the wrong version. So, I wanted to make sure that you have seen that.
And so, that's the report for you. I do have one item I want to discuss with you about the next semi-annual report, but before I go into that, I thought we'd stop and see if you have any questions about this report.
Karen?
Hi. The colors weren't true, so a lot of them, I just thought it was a printing error, but I wanted to look at page TRB 314. I guess, help me understand the 9F and G. The barcodes tell me one color, but then the risk score tells me that. How does it converted, how is it converted from the barcode to the regular risk code?
So, the risk score, it's all the way to the right, and that's that little dot. In this case, it's a, that color should match the residual risk. So, while you're showing that the upper bar is the inherent risk value, and the second bar right below that is the residual risk value.
Right, okay.
So, the residual risk value should match the color on the one to the, all the way to the right, that dot.
Okay, so it's always a residual risk color in that box?
It is in this case, yes.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Could you explain residual risk?
So, residual risk, again, is when we take into account all the efforts we've made to mitigate that risk, there's always some risk that's left over.
Gotcha.
And that's what this is meant to take.
It includes the mitigation?
It does include all the mitigation, yes.
Dana?
So, Julie, the slide you have talks a little bit about the risk champions being under the business areas.
Yes.
But in the write-up, it talks about the Executive Risk Committee, the Risk Champions Network, and the ERM team. Can you just, for those of us that are not necessarily as familiar with that, can you tell us where all those pockets are?
So, can I just describe the framework for you?
Yeah, please.
Sure, sure. So, maybe I'll start from the bottom and go up. You know, we have risk champions first, and those champions represent each business area. The business areas are really the best one to tell us what the risks are in each of their areas. And then they report up in concert with the ERM team that kind of helps guide them to get us to this risk report for you. They work kind of in combination together and report up to the Enterprise Risk, I'm sorry, the Executive Risk Committee, and that is primarily all the executives. And then we review the risks on an organization-wide perspective, and then that then would flow up to you in this report. Did I say that okay?
Absolutely correct.
Okay.
Perfect, thank you.
Any other questions from Board members? I don't see any other questions, Julie.
Okay. So, I wanted to talk to you a little bit about the next report. Phil and his team have been doing a lot of work looking at, how can we make this report maybe more streamlined or maybe be able to provide the information a little bit differently to you? And I wanted to just give you a preview of what they've been working on and get your feedback. So, in this representation on this graph, we've looked at all the sub-risks in each risk category, and they're showing a weighted average of all the sub-risks in each risk category for you here, and you see both the inherent risk and the residual risk together. And then this is overlaid on a heat map. So, this representation would replace the heat map that's on TRB 306.
Yes.
And then we would use this as the basis for our write-up to not only tell you what's changed in the sub-risks from the last report, but also to kind of describe to you, well, now you can see it in a little different format here. Now you can say, oh, my gosh, what's happening in information security? This is so high. And then we could give you context to that in terms of what we think is management is maybe a concern that we have or not have, and why this might be higher or lower. And so, just kind of wanted to get your feedback on this representation versus having the two different heat maps showing inherent and residual risk separate.
Yeah, I like that.
Phil?
Yes, I think this is really far more helpful. I mean, it's one picture instead of maybe four or five. But on informational security, just as an example, because it's the highest level of risk.
Yeah.
But yet, it's mitigated by what appears to be 11 points. Could you describe, for example, what the mitigation there includes?
Should we have Ashish come up? I don't know if that would be better coming from you.
Or maybe there's another example that somebody can describe.
First of all, give you a preview. You are going to get a full report on information security in closed session tomorrow.
That's why I wanted to be careful what we said.
So, a lot of what we do, a lot of our mitigation activities are not for public broadcast.
I'm sorry, let's take another one. I just want to identify some of the mitigation that comes into play. For example, pension administration.
Do you have the detail for what those mitigation strategies are?
I don't.
I'm sorry, what category did you choose?
What category? You choose one.
Pension Administration, I think that's a great one to talk through. And Ashish, if you would like to join in, he certainly can. It's an interesting one, because inherently, that's basically talking about our ability to make payments to our members with the system we currently have, which is START. Well, as you know, we have a big effort to mitigate that risk, and that's actually, it's part of transformational change. It's all the way to the right. So, you know, some of these things include exercises that Ashish's team will go through to make sure that the data quality is right, that we, you know, we run an allowance rule, I call it, I'm not sure this is the right term, pre-alignment rule, where we actually run, make a run, and then we validate that what's in there is correct. So, that's one way of making sure that we have accurate and timely benefits, which is this larger category, kind of what it's meant to do.
I can add some context to this. A lot of this, the risk that's associated with the pension administration system is associated with the system that we are on, which is our legacy START system. And that's what we're trying to change by moving into a new technology system. And the processes that we have to mitigate it are largely manual, because internal controls and our ability to be precise in how we're collecting information and calculating benefits should be at an automated level where, in which we are not. We have to overlay manual processes to mitigate the risks of miscalculations or errors in a calculation, for instance, based on the information that we get. So, the new system will be able to hopefully mitigate a lot of the manual, the exposure from manual processes that we currently are exposed to, but we do have manual processes in place to try to reduce the risk that we currently are.
So, this mitigation does not anticipate the change that we're in the process of looking at?
No, because that will be the, once that change occurs, then the risk will be different. It'll, you know, hopefully, the pension administration process, that won't be as high of a risk at that point. It'll have different risks, and we have a risk associated with the business transformation in and of itself, because there's risks associated with that.
That's a different category, transformation change.
Oh, okay. Number 10.
And once Pension Solutions is put into place and it's up and running, we'll reevaluate our pension administration risk category and judge it based on the new system and how it's operating.
And that's really where our risk champions come into play here, because they're seeing this in their business area, and they're looking at the internal controls, and they should be reviewing that and making sure, you know, what's working, what's not, what we need to talk about to put further controls into place. So, that's part of this process.
I do want to just add, highlighting, going back to the information security, because you pointed that out. One of the problems with the heat map is it's a two-dimensional heat map. It doesn't include velocity. And so, when you get to the risk about information security, you have to factor in velocity, and that is why it looks a little outsized, because again, that standard heat map is only two. It's sort of probability and severity, which we all know is pretty high for information security. But we also factor in velocity, so we'll talk about that a little bit more. But that's why it's such an outsized kind of figure.
So, this number includes velocity?
Includes velocity.
Okay, yes.
Phil, is that, are you good? Phil, you done? Okay. Joy?
Thank you. So, I agree. I think the display that you've got up now is helpful to look at, to see it both on one, in one graph. I guess I just have a question, you know, looking back at the risk score reports that were in the report. So, we'd have this graphical representation along with the score reports for each category is what we'd continue to see.
Yes, we plan on continuing to provide this risk score report. The only thing we do is alter it so that the weighted average score would be on the risk score report, so that you could tie that number to this representation here.
Got it, okay. So, can we go back to just any one of the risk score reports? Maybe say page TRB 312? If we look at that, I think I'm trying to understand, so TRB 312, it happens to be for information security, but there's a score for 7A, B, and C, the current risk score, which is the residual risk. And then above that is the score for the residual heat map. And oftentimes, like if I think about the reporting that we do for Pension Solution or other types of reporting matters, the way that you score the break, the subcategories is sometimes sort of averaged, if you will, to produce what the overall score is for that entire category. I don't think that's true here. So, how do you get the residual heat map score for the high-level category? Because it looks like it's different from, it's higher than what you've got for the subcategories.
So, great, great observation. You're absolutely right. In this case, so the heat map, this heat map here on TRB 306, its basis begins with all of the items that we go through and we judge in the risk score report, but there's an element of judgment that the executive team puts on this. And because it doesn't have velocity in it, that, and that's, Brian already mentioned it, so that's one of the reasons this one is set up as high as it is, because velocity is really the major element for this particular item. And so, the color you see up there on the residual heat map score is meant to match its placement on the heat map.
On that particular one, if you look at the category 7A, is really an incident, it's a breach, a security breach. So, that's really the catch-all. That's the big, and then the categories underneath it are really subcategories of what that, how that breach might be classified. So, they are, the risk is a little bit less that we will have a breach, because if you look at C, because we didn't do appropriate training of our staff, as opposed to the overall risk that we would have a breach. So...
So, the subcategories might have some weighting.
Might have some weighting.
Associated with it that we don't see. Okay.
So, one of the things we gain with going to this model is, part of the exercise was to go through and assign weights to each of the sub-risks. So, it becomes a mathematical exercise rather than including judgment in there, too. So, what this is here is where we've gone through and met with each of the risk champions and gotten their input as far as how we thought we should weight these, each of these sub-risks within their risk category, and that's what generates the score that you're seeing there.
And I think maybe one suggestion then is for future versions of this report, if you could note that or footnote it for, you know, if you're looking at the risk reports with the subcategories, it wasn't intuitive to me how you got to the...
Well, we hope to get to the point where it is intuitive and it would match. That's what we're working towards, yeah. But yes, until we get there, yes, we'd be happy to footnote that.
Karen?
So, an extension to Joy's question then, so are the subcategories, the A, B, C, et cetera, are they in order of weight? Are they just, they're arbitrary?
Yes, as we get new sub-risks, it would just add on to the end of whatever we've left off at. So, right now, at least the way the report is compiled today, it's not in any particular order. But once we get to the point where we can have certain weights, then we would identify that for you.
Okay, okay. So, is that a goal then?
Yes.
To put it in the weight order? That would be helpful.
Or display it somehow for you. Yeah.
We would find some way of noting that on there, so you knew which one was the highest-weighted risk of, in that particular category.
Right, because when Brian said that C was, C on this page was, had more weight than the others.
But it's at the end, yeah.
Yeah, until the end, so.
That's just happenstance on this particular.
Right, right, I know. But as an example.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So, Julie, what?
Work in progress.
Exactly. Well, it's, yeah, concept, and I agree with other comments that I think anytime you have something on just one page where you can get a broad brush, because that's kind of our job, is to look up at the 30,000-foot perspective, I think really helps. I wondered, could you just, I mean, I read through this, and I think like everyone does, you sort of go, okay, is there anything red and purple and, you know, that's in the danger zone? And I wondered, could you sort of guide us a little bit with how, for both of you, how we should look at this as Board members as we read this report? How does it guide our thinking about the enterprise?
Let me speak in general about that first before you go. So, that's our goal with doing this new approach, is to really give you that higher-level look of what does this really mean?
Okay.
And what do you really need to be concerned about? And have that oversight on what we're doing as staff from a risk perspective for the organization. So, that's really what we're hoping to get to, that we don't think we're quite there yet on the existing reports that we're providing. And so, that's, you know, this is just one step in getting us to that point.
And if I could just add, if you look at the higher, the things that are in the higher-risk area, the things that you're working on in the organization are in those areas.
They're addressing.
So, the pension administration and the transformational change, that's the pension administration project. Information security is a big focus that you guys are working on. It's not one of the, there are three big projects, but it is something that's at the, has the visibility and focus of the Board. Operational, that's where the collaborative model is. I mean, that's where our resources and all the issues that we're dealing with in the organization. So, we, the highest ones we really are, those things are captured and rolled up within those.
And so, by doing this new format and redesigning it, you should be able to see that in the report for what Cassandra just mentioned, and we could tie that together.
Right, and I was just thinking, maybe there's no way to get around this, but it's sort of like, it's helpful, I mean, because obviously, the parts that are higher risk are things like lack of adequate office space, and we're having an expansion. So, I guess I'm trying to think of it as a Board member, I'm always thinking of, okay, we've, I know we've mitigated that risk because we voted on the expansion, so we're doing that. So, what's the, what are the current risks, right? We're kind of addressing some of these other risks. So, what should I be thinking about now in terms of enterprise risk?
Well, again, the operations, there's a lot of things that are not, you know, things that shouldn't be at your range of visibility.
Right.
Like, we're trying to deal with parking and how those things are going to transition when we, you know, block off the parking lot and have interim need for space and parking and things like that, that really get down into the weeds of what we need to manage in the organization on an operational level.
Okay. And that's really not our, I mean, it's not our...
Yeah, I mean, they are listed in the subcategories and how we're trying to mitigate it, but we try to bring it up to a high enough level that it makes sense and it still aligns with our, I mean, it does align with our overall focus of the organization.
And one item in our work plan at the Executive Risk Committee is to review emerging risks. What's new, what do we think is going to, you know, be in the future that we need to be worried about? And so, we just had that conversation with the committee not long ago. So, we do do that on a regular basis as well.
Okay. Dana?
So, the one thing that's not on that, because we didn't have any movement in the categories, this really facilitates showing the movement fairly easily on the, we'll have some, and we haven't quite worked out how that we would do that, but show, if it moved this particular period since the last time, it would call it out for you on the screen. So, with a bar lowered or rose, we would show it in some way or another, whether it's arrows or shadowing or something along those lines.
Okay, that's great. Dana?
Thank you. That kind of goes with what my next question or comment might be. If we have inherent risk and we always do something to mitigate that risk, it seemed to me that the arrows down were superfluous, and the main question, would there ever be a time where that arrow didn't go down? And so, are we, so let me ask you, would there be a time that these arrows wouldn't go down? I'll just put it out that way. Or, you know, if it stays the same, how are we thinking about depicting that?
So, I'll give you an example of it, you know, in the case of emerging risks, say we just added an emerging risk, and it shows up on our risk score report. If we haven't done anything to mitigate that risk, the bars could be exactly the same. Inherent and residual might be exactly the same. And that would be something I would think that you would want to call out. So, these are both the same. Are we not going to mitigate this risk? And then, you know, hopefully, that would be something we would address in our write-up that says, you know, this particular risk...
No, that's not what I'm, that's not what I'm questioning. I guess it's the format. If the bars are the same, I know that we've not mitigated it? Well, I guess I shouldn't assume that, because maybe we've tried to mitigate it and we've not mitigated it successfully. I guess, I just wonder if having the directional arrows is superfluous, so there's more information than maybe we need.
Well, so maybe the arrows aren't the right idea. We were trying to find some way of denoting a change from period to period for you. So, that, so whether it's an arrow or some other method, that's what we were hoping to do for you.
Are the bars not period to period?
So, this is just as of, in this case, it's as of 331.
And the bars are the same, correct? Or are those...
So, the dark gray bars are inherent risk for that whole risk category?
I'm not talking about this graph. I'm talking about that report.
So, this isn't period to period. It's not period to a period change.
But the arrows would be period to period?
That's actually just showing the mitigation effectiveness those arrows are. So, I think your question is well-placed, is would you ever not see the arrow going down? And the only time that would be is if we're not making any effort.
Making any effort.
And when we wouldn't make an effort would be if we're accepting the risk as it is, because sometimes you accept the risk.
Right.
If it's a risk that's at a level, so...
And then it wouldn't have an arrow.
Right.
Got it. Party.
Yeah, but not at this level.
Thank you.
Karen, exactly. I just want to make sure I'm understanding this correctly. So, when you do the report, will we see the report as it is here, it's only the heat map that's going to change?
Yes, we won't show you the heat map as shown on 306.
Right.
This will replace the two heat maps.
Okay, but we will still have the report?
You'll still have the risk score report that will tie to this presentation.
Okay.
And we'll definitely have some more explanation for you in terms of, you know, this new presentation requires us, I feel, to provide you with additional context to it.
Okay, got it, thank you.
Yeah.
Keith?
I like that presentation. Some of this is, is it, this is helpful in the sense that it identifies, for me and for us, I guess, where staff believes that, you know, it says enterprise, so that they're, the various risks is what you identify as significant, that you, staff have to keep your eyes on and address directly. But is it that, it's this, anytime you add, put numbers to something, you know, you try to, I don't know if that's quantify or qualify, but you have like a 38, information security, number seven, 38 after mitigation. It's 38 something, some things, widgets or whatever of concern or risk versus 10 on pension funding actuarial after mitigation. Doesn't imply that information security is nearly four times significant. Our attention should be focused four times greater on information security than it does pension funding. It doesn't imply that, does it? So, that, which is for us to say, okay, if staff has identified these issues as especially important to the running of this agency, and then our, what we take from it is, what are you, what are we doing? You know, how are we mitigating it? And how well are we getting, recognize that they still pose a risk to us? But it's really more standalone in the sense that these are all important issues, although some, I'm not sure if you meant velocity, meaning timing or what. Some of these, like transformational change, to me, are a little different from information security, where you're talking about a breach, where you might end up having to, you know, provide remedies to the teachers whose data was exposed versus transformational change, where over time, you know, like change management or something like that will have a long-term effect, or it has an effect on operations. But how do you, this is not equating all these different qualities.
I think that some of it is because of the velocity that's overlaid into this. Maybe you can speak to that, Bill, if that's correct. Because if you're looking at the information security, which Brian was discussing, the velocity of issues that happen in that category, as opposed to the pension funding, where when something happens, it's a, takes a long time, takes a long, took a long time to get the system in place, it takes a long time for the funding to get, you know...
I guess the question is, what are we supposed to do with this information? And how, if, risk always implies we have a fiduciary duty to do something or to make sure that that risk is dealt with. So, what are we as the fiduciaries require, should we be doing with this information? And how should we look at it? And how should we use it in order to be able to do what we're supposed to do?
You know, just, I'd start at the top level. It isn't about being a pension fund or state agency. There isn't a modern corporation acting out there any longer that doesn't have a Board reviewing risk management. I mean, it's just part and parcel of every corporate board. I mean, it's just part and parcel of every corporate board's responsibilities to look at that. So I, on other boards I sit on, I look at versions of these in different formats, but there's no doubt about it, I think we've all had some very harsh lessons in this last decade to realize, you know, if you looked at CalSTRS 10 years ago, this wasn't a board item, this wasn't a scheme, we didn't meet quarterly on this. You know, our business has changed dramatically because of some hard lessons, as corporate America, so there's that, just the transformation of all business, to think harder about these kinds of factors. So it's, it's part of the DNA of a, of a good business to be doing this. And part of your, you know, to me, of a corporate board or your board as fiduciaries, is to ensure and to review that we have adequate processes in place and we're talking about it regularly, it isn't stale, that there's a vibrant conversation, that we act on it, that we have mitigating plans in place. You know, I think you have to hear that story and make sure that it meets your satisfaction, that it's being done in a diligent fashion by us, who are responsible to do this every day. So that'd be, to me, the generic aspect of it, and I don't know, Brian, have you seen it from a fiduciary differently, or if it's more...
Well, actually, I would just, I would just add on to that, is the simple answer to your question, I think, is to hold our feet to the fire, is to hold management's feet to the fire. Is, you know, you may have your own view about what the rest of the organization are, but you're relying on management to bring those risks to your attention and then report to you on what they're doing to mitigate those risks and address those risks and what the resources are being expended. So that's one of the reasons why you'll get, you know, you get a report on information security. Actually, if you look at all those categories, you can almost, just over the last couple of days, see where you have gotten input on all of those risks. So I think the simple answer, if it is, is holding management's feet to the fire.
And we will be having an education item in the, on risk governance in the July ARM Committee meeting, so that will, I think, also provide some additional context relative to the responsibilities of the board as well.
Might be helpful, too, to then find out what level of risk cannot be in these items, particular items cannot be eliminated. Our expectation shouldn't be that for information security, the inherent risk should be reduced to zero, because that's not possible.
Right.
You know, so...
I think that's true for a lot of risk, right? It's mitigating it, right, or trying to figure out how we can manage it as much as possible. So these are good comments, Keith. Great, I don't see anything from anyone else, so.
Okay.
You've gotten your input.
We will have this, thank you so much.
Thanks, Philip, thanks, Julie, appreciate it. I have more input than you wanted. Great, all right, we are looking at the work plan, Doc.
Sure, like the other committees you've been in these last couple of days, this is a draft work plan for adoption at your July meeting. You know, the board is a bit different as you look at this work plan than the committees. Obviously, like any board, public or corporate, the job of the board is to receive the committee reports and affirm the actions or debate the actions of the committees. So there's just a core body of responsibilities related to the committee activities. The second piece of your work plan is just general governance responsibilities, the evaluations of yourself, your consultants, your key executives, all those types of things. And then, as I mentioned yesterday to you, two of the big three projects, you're going to see considerable reporting around and discussion on the, as we get in the deep heart of the Pension Solution Project. And we'll be kicking off the facility's construction in August, so there'll be reporting at every meeting of those two projects. And just looking over through the draft plans, then, on pages 317 and 18, I see two things that we'd want to just modify right now, and that is in March, that's an, that's an errant descriptor of the strategic plan, because actually you already adopted that, that was left over from last year's plan, so we don't have that in March. And then on the Pension Solution Project, under the technology side, as we've mentioned, and you'll hear more about it tomorrow in the morning report, we do have one last action from the board on that project, and that is to true up the budget relative to the staff side. You trued it up relative to the contractor side before, or at least CGI, I should say. And now we need to, for the other resources on the project, need to true that up. And then again, there'll be, we'll need to then affirm some of those resources in the formal budgetary request to the legislature. So in the budget that you send to the Department of Finance, and that's, again, drafted in September and then finalized in November, we need to embrace those resources that go on to the Department of Finance, that go on to the legislature. So I just want to flag that in the technology line, it isn't just generic reporting, we've got to make sure we keep the resources true to the project. So that's the high points of it.
Do we want to say anything about the, so we have fiduciary training planned for September?
Well, we have it July or September. We've got to, we're going to have to draft that July agenda out, because we're going to shoot for two days and see if it fits there, or if we need to nudge it over to September. I thought we, we'll do that, actually, probably Tuesday, staff meeting, we'll try and map out each item for July and see if it can fit or not. But it's pretty tight to stay to two days.
Any questions?
And of course, the actuarial items you heard about this morning, that just reflects exactly what David went over for you in that row in the actuarial piece.
Yep. Great, for some reason. All right, that looks good. Okay, let's, sure, go ahead and punch in.
Just the...
Hang on, go ahead.
Committee assignments and everything will be effective in the July board meeting?
Yes, yeah, you affirmed them today, so they're now effective for, yeah, the next meeting, yeah.
Great.
Yeah.
All right, should we just move into your report, Doc?
Yeah, I'm ready.
Okay.
I was going to actually start out with an item that's not literally in the CEO report, but it's kind of a fun item. Some of the board members were with us several years ago when we did our annual board off-site over by Stanford, and we had Dr. Laura Carstensen, I know, Joy, you were with us that day, remember, and Sharon and Dana, Karen, yeah, you were with us, Lynn, and she heads up the Stanford Center on Longevity.
We were at Palo Alto.
We were not at Stanford.
Whoa.
We were in Palo Alto.
Oh, that's where we are, Palo Alto, thank you.
She's from Stanford. We were near Stanford.
She's from Stanford, you're right, we were at Palo Alto. It was owned by, in fact, it was owned by the pension fund from University of California. I forgot that, thank you. And Dr. Laura Carstensen really gave us, I think, a very interesting presentation on aging and retirement. And, you know, I think it opened all of our eyes, that there's a lot more to this discussion than just the annuity check that goes to retiree to make someone's life complete in retirement. And it just had lots of interesting biological data, human studies that she revealed for us. And I've tried to keep that relationship going with Stanford since that presentation. She's been, obviously, a strong intellectual spirit in this area. What you may not know is that Longevity Center conducts an annual competition of universities on what they call longevity design challenges, and university teams from around the world submit projects. You guys okay over there? Okay, I don't know if you had, we're opining on this. And, and what's interesting is, they have a design competition and pick ideas that are the best around longevity. And I just want to tell you the three winners. So this year, there were 97 entries from universities around the world, 97 entries, and that represented entries from 24 countries, okay? And the theme for this year's competition was focused on finding ways to promote intergenerational relationships and contributions from all generations, so to bring generations together and also around the aging theme. Now, I assume this was a fair judging, but the two winners were actually Stanford and Berkeley, but I'm going to assume there's independent fair judges that did all this judging, but it was, that does seem odd to me with 54 universities. So these were, I'm just going to read you the quick descriptors of the three winners from the universities in this area of longevity. So the winning team from Berkeley, the name of their project was, "So You Think You Know Your Grandma." And what they did was, they, the team developed a card game specifically targeted at breaking down barriers between members of different generations. Their unique approach combines elements of storytelling and game dynamics to engage players who may perceive differences, who have differences in mindsets, views, and perceived stereotypes. So that's the kind of fun thing that comes out of these university teams. The team that tied with Berkeley was Stanford, and they called themselves the Family Room Team. And what I like about this, you know, we always hear so much innovation, entrepreneurship coming out of Stanford about all kinds of intriguing technology, but these are, these are apps and things about aging, so it's kind of different to hear this. Their team designed an app, a low-barrier app, that lets families capture and share histories of their loved ones through high-quality audio stories.
Oh, very cool.
Interesting, very cool. I can't exactly explain this last one, but it's interesting. This one's from Young Z University in Taipei, and it's called Pillow Fight. And they created a video game platform using pillows as game controllers. The team demonstrated how a simplified controller allows very young and very old players to actually play games together, creating shared laughter and experiences. So interesting, huh? So anyway, I just wanted you, I hadn't updated you a long time, what the Longevity Center was doing at Stanford, so that's that. All right, let me turn to the, to the heart of the CEO report, I'm just going to highlight a few areas for you, things that give you a little more depth to things. But first and most importantly, is the issue of our fifth annual sustainability report. You're among the very few that actually get a printed copy, since we distribute everything digitally. And this beautiful graphics was designed by Lisa Williams. Lisa, are you out there somewhere? There you are. She's over there. So Lisa does a lot of the graphics that you're used to seeing on our reports that are related to the enterprise risk, our enterprise area. And then Rhonda Lindsay, Rhonda, you're right there, she is our new business lead for developing the sustainability report. She's relatively new to CalSTRS, but jumped in the middle of this to help us produce this. And then you see this card that we have, and we're, we're passing this out everywhere we go. One is, you know, I've said this before, although we are now in our fifth year of producing a sustainability report, if you were a corporate board of any size in America, you've been producing a sustainability report for many years, or a European company. And those sustainability reports follow the format of the Global Reporting Initiative. We would just call it the GRI, if you're in the business of doing these reporting. And for those of you that know Seres, our partner in a lot of our investor activities, Seres started GRI and spun off that organization some years ago in Amsterdam. But the long-range, you know, the long-range view of this is that someday corporations will no longer produce a financial statement one day and a separate GRI report another day. That if we, if we're true to our words, that we talked about in the investment committee, that the information in these sustainability reports is just as important to understanding the strategies and risks and financial performance of a business as traditional financial metrics, then at some point, there has to be the term integrated reporting done by businesses. We're not at that point, having regulatory bodies that have developed principles and metrics around, how would we do integrated reportings? So currently, we have standards coming from GRI in Amsterdam around sustainability reporting, and then we have standards for financial reporting in the private sector coming from FASB, or the public sector from GASB. But we want to start to present these reports together to get, at least get people, when they see CalSTRS, they see our financial report, they see our enterprise sustainability report, and they see the investment report that Chris Schop produces around green investments. So again, that's the reason for the, kind of bringing these all together in the report. And again, as we talk about this report with people, we want to make sure they don't rely on antiquated ideas of environmental sustainability, that the risks that we're talking about here, the things we're talking about in this report, is about funding, it's about preparedness for retirement, it's about cybersecurity. Those were the three areas of interest that were most identified by the stakeholders, our members, our employees, as things that we need to be thinking about. So the report digs into those issues and provides a comprehensive discussion of those. So we sent this out to every public pension plan in America of any size with a video to explain it, because we want everyone to someday do these, not just CalSTRS. And we talk about these everywhere we go, so hopefully you'll have a chance to look this over and everything. And our employees, Rhonda went through formalized training from GRI, I actually did it with her, and we want the staff that are involved in this, not just to really understand the, it's a very elaborate scheme. It may look pretty and flows really well, the report, but to actually do this according to the standards requires quite a bit of work to get it done. So there you have it.
Doc, out of the institutional investors in the U.S., how many institutional investors?
Well, they would be done as standard fare by State Street, Northern Trust, Wells Fargo, Chase City, all the major financial institutions.
But like institution, like are, like institutional investors like CalSTRS, like pension funds?
Like a public pension fund, there wouldn't be any.
So we're the first?
So we're the only one?
CalPERS produces a report, but it is my understanding, it's not done to a GRI standard, they have a different presentation of how they present their sustainability, they do present their sustainability efforts, though, for sure. But on the public pension side, it's just, I, in fairness, Sharon, it's, I think it's still alien to government, the need to think about sustainability. You know, we've had efforts under Governor Brown's administration, they started to develop skill sets in some of the agencies, certainly our colleagues next door at DGS have made a huge transformation in the tone of that agency. If you walked over today, it is very different than it was under prior leadership, under the current leadership, they talk about it, they change their communications about it. So, you know, I would say DGS has really moved in that direction, but most state agencies haven't moved past the environmental part of that, to recognize, well, training your employees is part of sustainability. Leadership, succession, all those things are part of a, of a long-term vision of business. State government still has a very 12-month fiscal year kind of feel to it, so I think they have a ways to go, but, you know, this will, this is certainly, in the private sector, you know, clearly you see movement by the big players, what we're doing. All right. And then I wanted to talk a little bit about our customer service, that was on page 322. And, you know, we had our new board member orientation last Friday, so we asked each of the new board members to put on a headset and not personally answer calls, but listen to calls, and just again, to kind of get a feel for what that is. Cassandra's and Ashish have mentioned that, you know, we need to monitor our customer service in these coming years, as we do the Pension Solution Project, to see what kind of stress we put on those service levels. I will tell you, the numbers are on page 323 are shocking. I mean, these were always stretch goals for our customer service, and as you can see in that, in that six-month data, now, we've had blips in some areas since then, but I will tell you, we were answering calls in 30 seconds, you can see the actual performance exceeded the mark, our online messages were being answered in one business day, and the other two measures were also meeting their standards. So we're, we're in a good spot, I guess you'd say. If, if we're going to get into a bad period here coming up, as the project intensifies, at least we're starting from a position of strength rather than weakness.
Our people rock.
Yeah, and again, for the new board members, Dana was the only one here around the system back in 2002 when I was hired. When we were implementing the old system, that was my first month on the job, and it was a disaster. It was, we really had lost control of the customer service operations because the project was just not implementing well at the time, so we had to stabilize that customer service operation a lot. So we've all learned from that, and obviously, this time, we want to be in a much better position for doing the customer service. I wanted to just show you again, we showed you a quick, three-minute video of a teacher earlier, I just wanted to show you this one, three-minute video we have around our staff that work on the call center. You've seen the member, I want you to actually see some of the staff talking about what it feels to work like here in the, in the customer side.
My name's Elena Montanaz, and I work in the contact center. It can be very satisfying when you're able to provide good service and, you know, when someone is calling in and saying it's a tough call, maybe they're notifying us that a loved one has passed, and you really just want to be as supportive and helpful as possible.
It can be challenging, I wouldn't say tough, but it's also really rewarding.
What gives me the most satisfaction is being able to assist members, employers, just pretty much educators, with getting things done when they need it to be done.
I do enjoy my job, I really enjoy being able to communicate with people all day who are teachers.
Those are my most emotional calls, because it's usually a spouse calling, and they're saying that their, the love of their life of 30, 40, 50 years has passed away, they don't know what to do next, they're crying, I usually sometimes cry with them. Those are like the hardest calls to take, but it's very rewarding, and then it helps you appreciate life.
So just, I just wanted to see that, because, you know, we get caught up here in some big issues, talking about China, we can talk about actuarial issues for hours if we want to, but I, but I...
We want to.
But I think we, most of it, all of us that work here get it, that these, the people you just saw on the screen, and many more like them in the contact center, are pushing it out every day on calls and communications, and trying to get teachers in the right place for their retirement, and we're, we're the support staff for them, and we always got to know that here. They're on the front lines, we're working for them to get... They're on the front lines, we're working for them to get it right. So very, very important part of the operation, they're doing very well, very well. Last thing I had in the report was around the risks and just an update.
Sorry, Jack, I interrupted. I, I missed, there was a couple of people that wanted to.
Oh, sure.
Comment, so go ahead, Dana.
When we have people call into the call center, do we ever try to encourage them or talk to them about having a Meister's account? Do we ask them if they have a Meister's account? Do we encourage them to sign up for one so that as calls come in, we're capturing more and more emails?
Yes, we, we do encourage them to log on, I mean, create a MyCalSTRS account.
Super. Thank you.
Phil?
Jack, what, what, what is the burnout rate for some of these people answering these calls? Because I was on with Josh and, you know, on two of the calls, it was, you know, a person who was in a bit distressed or not quite all there. And, you know, to, to absorb all of that day in and day out seems to me to be, you know, quite mind-numbing.
You know, it is so different. We, you know, Verizon shut down one of their call centers here, so we picked up a number of Verizon employees in our call center. And, you know, this, as you so well said, it's so different than changing someone's calling plan. You know, you gotta come to work at 8:00 a.m. and someone might say their spouse has just passed away and they have no idea what benefit is there. And, you know, it's time for you to go home at 5:00 and you're thinking about your family and you get that same call at 5:00 and, and then you've got to embrace that person. And also, I'd say, you know, we tend to think about the death, the disability calls, which are tough, but even just the, the normal call about someone retiring, there is so much emotion built up about the expectation of just a great retirement, and, and you're also anxious as all get out. And so you, you, you have to embrace that emotion just as much as the call for, around death and disability. You know, I don't have a specific turnover rate for you, but it's high. There is a good news part of it. You know, if, if, you know, I used to work at an insurance company and we had a pretty high turnover in our call center, and we would just lose them to another investment company down the road. Here, here, we graduate a lot of the people that, that need relief from that, if you will, into other areas of the organization, benefits and services. And for us, that's a position of strength, not, not weakness, having that turnover. There's nothing better than having an employee that then ends up processing transactions, having the real-life experiences of the, all the little things that go on around retirement, people thinking about retirement. So if you've got that emotional background to you, and then you come back into the transactional area, to me, it creates a better employee and a better work history rather than us just losing them to another state agency. I mean, you, you'll hear much more about our, our building and how we think about work culture here, but if we can support the staff on some of those other, if we want to call them softer areas of work, they'll want to stay here and promote into another part of the organization. But it's, turnover is, is real, for sure, in this body of work.
But you have sufficient numbers to, to deal with it now?
In terms of staff working the area? Well, you know, we try. We have, you know, it's, it's, it's the most measured part of any business nowadays. You know, a few of us, a few of us would want to, in some ways, worry, but think about being in a job where you're, you're being monitored by software every second, you go out for a break, your software knows it every day, the workloads are being monitored, every, 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 everything is being monitored. So, you know, we, we watch that carefully, and, and it's been hard making these benchmarks that we have. I will tell you that. There's a lot of places where, you know, you sit on the phone for one, two, five, 10, 20 minutes, and you can see, we're trying to get people answered in 30 seconds. We don't want people waiting that long. So I would say that it's been, there's been workload stress over the years, for sure, especially when we, we have the evolution of, of email communications. You know, that, you know, you write an email, you're expecting the answer in one day, not two days, and not three days, and so that you, and you'll start to lose the customer if you're, if you're looking at 48 and 72 hours instead of 24. So the, the pressures to perform are, are high. You were gonna add to something.
Yeah. And the, the staff go through intensive training, so they're prepared for the different calls that they're, that they are going to be experiencing. And so they get so much context and knowledge on the core benefit that they really become ripe for the picking in the other parts of the organization. I mean, they're, we recruit within our own organization for other, for other positions, and so they have the opportunity, and we want them to, to have, to advance their careers here. But in call centers, there is a turnover rate that is generally high and just in the industry. So we do struggle with that. And sometimes we go through periods where there, and I think we are doing that currently, where we have a big, you know, recruitment gap or vacancy gap where we're going through recruitment and trying to fill positions that have moved either in parts of the organization or through other parts of the state. Because, again, being in Sacramento, where the state capital is and where there are all this, the majority of the state employment is here, they can transfer to any other organization or promote into any other organization and be considered the same employer. So it's, it can be, come difficult.
I had the pleasure, in honor of going through that, the new board member orientation where I got to sit with Terry in the call center, and I was very impressed by her professionalism and how she dealt with the, the three or four calls that came during that time. But I also came away with an appreciation for the management, the supervisors, the management and the team that Cassandra and Jack and everyone else under, you know, has, has established for that unit. It is important, when I was at the Student Aid Commission, we had a very small, understaffed call center for students, you know, and we'd get students statewide to read, you know, and we would have to basically have, I forgot what they call it, response rates, and we had long wait times, and there were times when the deadlines would come for the FAFSA that it was especially difficult because students and parents would call when they couldn't get through to the institution. So we know the, the stresses and the coordination and the constant oversight that you need to do, so I appreciate that. And I saw, having seen it firsthand, I can attest that this is a, this is a good unit.
Thank you, Keith. I, I'm sure I'm, we have a lot of employees listening, so the message to the employees was what's important to hear from them to hear that. I appreciate you saying that. The employees you heard on the, on the video weren't on a teleprompter, that was obviously how they feel. And so, you know, it's, it's, it's very real, the commitment to the mission.
So Jack, first thing, because the call center people are on calls, can you please let them know how much we appreciate them being willing to have, not only be monitored 24/7 while they're on the phone, but having board members sit in? That had to have been an added stress for that time period. So please say thank you. And so, and I'm glad you're recognizing the, the stress that comes with it. Just gonna be an emotional day for me.
Oh, good.
My nephew is a paramedic in Oakland. His company has counselors on staff. Do we have anybody, not that we need to hire a counselor, but do we have anybody that our call center people can go to, to vent before they go home?